All right, everybody say one more thing, just call to order now.
I'm ready, I just wanted to find thoughts around it.
Yeah, you got it.
Found it.
All right, so we'll call to order the City Council Public Safety Subcommittee, it is March twenty-fourth, two thousand and sixteen. We're all here. Did everybody have a chance to read the minutes from the last meeting?
Yep.
Much improved.
Second. All the favor.
Hi.
Okay. Okay, public speak time. Thanks for coming, we'll just run through. So, our new business is actually next, so it's the acceptance of Fox Run as a public way. And we got all the documents, thank you. What I did see is you put a request to the Planning Board and the DPW and Attorney Fitzgibbon.
Yes.
To get feedback from them. I have not received feedback from any of those individuals.
Okay, the only person I've heard from is Attorney Fitzgibbon. He did contact me, he asked me to make two changes, which I did, and I sent it back to him, which I know he's received because I did a return receipt.
Okay.
So, I've already made his changes.
Okay. What are those changes, is that...
So, I mistakenly had left towards the bottom of the deed because the last one I had done was Paul Street. I had mistakenly left the words Paul Street because I basically cut in pace, so...
He's so good, I have sent him stuff and he's like, he's so right on about it.
So, it was towards the end after the, you know, the plan reference, so I changed it to Fox Run in both of those places. Other than that, he had no other changes to the deed.
So, Barbara had asked me to, whether or not I should invite you to this meeting, and basically I was waiting to see if I would hear from the Planning Board or the Department of Public Works, because I don't, we can't move on it.
Right, until we have...
Until we get information from them, so, I mean, I know you sent a very clear request for information. And, yeah, I can do that, no problem.
Thank you.
That's fine, I just saw that you were meeting tonight, so I figured I would come down since I'm right there anyways.
Okay, good.
And just so you know, that is an unsigned as-built, I had, because we don't have a PDF form or a smaller version, I did submit a signed one, but it was a large plan form.
I think they said that in the notes, so that we would have something...
And I didn't bring my LAR, I didn't know if you wanted it, Holberg and Howe had done a my LAR. But that, the reason, that's why that's unsigned, was because they do not have an unsigned one, a signed one in PDF format.
Well, I mean, I don't know if you guys got a chance to go down and take a look at it?
I did, I know, yeah.
And, yeah. It all looked pretty straightforward, there was only one thing I had a question for. And I'm just being cautious because we don't have a city engineer right now.
Yes.
That's usually who we, you know, partner with and go through with what's going on. There is like a barrel over a sewer and a hole in the road and...
I talked, I went into the DPW when I dropped off, you know, the office over here when I dropped off the letter, and they said that apparently there has been an issue with a catch base in there. So, we just need something in writing that tells us what needs to be fixed, so that we can go about fixing those issues.
And you're waiting for that from the DPW?
I am, I had called and talked with Joe Kimpinski, because I said, "Without an engineer, without Jim Gracia, what do you want me to do? Do you have someone else that you're going to solicit to do this?" And he said, "Just send it to me," and he said that he was going to, I thought he said he was going to provide something, but then he listed repairs and they were going to run.
Okay. So I guess all we can do is reiterate the request to the Department of Public Works? I'm sorry.
That's okay, that's all right. I just figured I'd come down, I didn't know what you did have for information or not.
That was the only thing I saw on a visual tour. I mean, the curves all looked great, I looked at it as sidewalks, the roundabout center open space seems to be maintained. I'm sure that's addressed somewhere as far as who's going to be responsible for that.
The homeowners association is going to take care of that.
Yep, so, everything looked totally smooth sailing except for that catch base.
Okay.
So, and that's, that's not anything we can do.
Okay, all right.
You don't know how to fix it?
I don't know how to fix that.
I don't either, I just know what they are.
Yeah, but what we can do is, you know, as soon as we get some information from, as soon as they reply, we'll set up a meeting, and even if it's the only agenda item, just to get it done for you as fast as possible.
Sure.
So we'll try and move it over.
Okay.
Yeah, and if you want to forward the attorney stuff to us, that'd be fine, too.
Sure, so what do you just want to see, because he called me.
Oh, it was just an error with the name, right?
It was just, and I have the revised first page if you'd like it, so... So that's just the revised, so all I did was insert Fox Run here and here, I had left Paul Street mistaken, so...
We might instead of Attorney Fitzgibbon, that's, if he saw it, or whatever, because we had it on the record.
Yep. That's what I was going to look at, is all three of the requests for information that we heard back from everybody, get them all to sign off on it. Yeah.
Okay.
Great.
Just let me know.
I will, I will, we'll do that, we'll send an email saying we met tonight, and that, you know, these are, our question is about the catch base, and we're just getting out of your places to sign off on it.
Okay.
Great, thank you very much. Thanks for coming, sorry we couldn't wrap it up for you, that's all right. So, hi Counselor Connor, hi Counselor Hayes, what brings you here?
I just want to go to everybody's needs, because I just feel like I want...
That's good.
Smart.
Thanks for coming.
Yeah, I was going to make a request to get a copy of the minutes from other meetings, just so that we know what's going on, because you're right, a lot of the work happens at the Subcommittee and then shows up at City Council, you're like, "Ah, I don't even know what this is."
You can watch them on TV, too.
I know.
I do that, yeah.
I don't really know what channel it is.
You just go to ecat.com.
That's ecat, yeah.
I don't think these ones end up on TV, but they're all on...
Yeah, they're all on TV.
Yeah, I'm on cable. It's just so weird for me to like...
Was this the thing where somebody, these two plots have to take care of that island?
No, if they have a homeowner...
This is a very similar looking other road.
Ah.
Yeah. So, that is a proposal for somebody to do a street acceptance, which means that the city would then be responsible for the street.
Plowing.
Plowing, maintaining, any kind of puddles or anything like that. And it is good for our community, because we get our money to fix roads and puddles and stuff like that, for the mileage that we have in town, so the more we can accept, it bumps up our mileage.
Oh, good, okay.
That brings us to, one of the things of our continuing business is the street acceptance protocol, and I don't know if anybody's had a chance to look at that yet, or what we want to do next. Salem had sent me this really cool, and after I read it, I'm like, "I wonder if he actually would have to send that to me."
Probably did.
But it was a sign ordinance?
Yes.
And the way that that, the ordinance itself is structured, just the formatting...
Yeah, it's pretty great.
Is pretty great.
Well, it's a model ordinance, so...
Yeah.
I was sending it to everybody because I wanted everybody to have a C of this one, so, because it's such a good one.
Yeah, so...
Yeah, by everyone, who do you mean?
Everybody whose email address I had on my phone at the moment.
I see how this works.
Yeah, but if you want, if you give me your email now, then I can do it at this moment.
Pconnafedystampton.org or whatever. No, that's exactly what it is. I thought it was wicked pretty and cool, and I would like to take the liberty of having a whack at our street ordinance and kind of formatting it in a similar fashion. And I was also wondering if you did any more research on whether or not the street protocol should be in ordinance, or should it be City Council rules, or...
I did not do any more research on that.
Okay.
But...
Where's it going to live, basically?
I think it would probably be, just off the top of my head, I think it would be in rules. I think. But we can, like, I think Dan would be the one to ask about that.
Yeah, but, you know, I wasn't going to discount your knowledge and experience with all the work you've done on ordinance.
Yeah, I mean, because within ordinance, I don't, it wouldn't, I can't think of a place where it would fit. Except, well, it might, I mean, you could potentially put it within the zoning ordinance.
That's my gut.
But, this, there's not a lot in the zoning ordinance specific to streets, other than, and parking, like, no parking stuff is in the regular piece of the ordinance. So, I mean, I guess we could, we can just debate it and figure it out, the best place for it.
Okay. Yeah, no, it's a compelling question, I really, I, it's not, you know, my area of expertise at all as far as where something like that would live eventually, so...
P-C-O-N-N-I-F.
F, two N's, two S's.
Did you never listen to Ray Connor growing up?
I did.
Uncle Ray?
I don't know who he is.
You're, you're too young.
He's tending to...
Well, no, there you go.
My parents listened to him, he was a guy, in a musical, the Ray Connor singers. Just dated myself back to...
All right, that sounds...
Did you carry it, East Hampton?
Yeah. Oh, I had yours, I don't know why you hadn't sent it to me. So you want to redo this draft into that new format?
Yeah, just kind of format a little bit nicer, maybe move it into like one document, because right now it's all in sections. Did you have a chance to look at it and compare it to other?
Just this copy, I didn't get, three different versions.
Oh, I said that because I've got it in Google Docs, so I've got like Section One, Section Two, Section Five, so that is the whole document.
All right.
I mean, on the other end, on my end, rather than having it split up. Because I just added Salem to the Google Docs, so... I mean, I know it's super kind of boring, but there's some interesting things. And so, kind of the goal with this for us is to make it so, when we're, we take care of ours that aren't necessarily accepted, because it's a public safety issue, you've got to get fire trucks down there and cleaned up and make sure it all happens. So, we end up like losing good amount of money. So one of the things that the prior Subcommittee did is we talked to the DPW and other things to try and make it so that it's not necessarily an income generating situation, but we don't lose money. Because our attorney, our city attorney isn't on a retainer, we pay him by the hour, so every time we do these things, we get charged, every time they go with a snow truck, every time they go out with a street sweeper, every time they go out to just salt, you know, and it's money. So, try to kind of recoup that, and there's a couple of different ways we could do that, with a, you know, we can charge a fee to the property owner, like, "Okay, so here's an invoice at the end of it, because we went out four or five times," or we have a bond and we subtract from that bond, so...
Did you share that with me, the street acceptance protocol? Trying to find it again, trying to pull up the...
For God's sake. Not infallible.
Can you say, moving this year?
Is this a developed area yet, or is this still under construction?
They are all developed except for Lot Eight. They are finishing up, they took a little cruise through today.
I don't know if I have it.
I am not seeing your name on the share, I wonder what I did. I'm going to fix it immediately.
And you can share it now?
Yeah, it's jamming in.
What's the name of this street?
Fox Run. Fox Run.
That's pretty.
It's pretty, I think the houses are pretty fancy.
Yeah, you throw Fox in there, right, there's some wraparound torches.
That's really nice.
It's got a nice pool in the backyard.
Wow.
You can pull up Google Maps.
Really? Just zoom right in on it. Um, Salem, what is your...
Salemstar@gmail.com. I do have East Hampton one, but I just haven't counted her out to...
I set it up, and then I talked to Barry, and I got all the pop three stuff, so I can send from that address as well, if anybody would like to do a very boring, it's usually just me and JP, but I have all the information to set it up, so you can do it right from, you can choose your...
Yeah, the portals.
The portal's a nightmare. You just get, get out of there, I can get you out of there pretty quickly. And then, the next thing on our agenda is the parking around Pleasant Street Mills, which I have not made any moves on.
I've gone out and looked a little bit at some of the areas. And I think really, Pleasant Street, what is probably going to make sense for us to do is to go out there with either the chief or the captain and take a look, get some measurements, you know, because I, and, you know, we might want to look at, we're in a couple places restricting the type of vehicle that parks, you know, like, for example, in front of 180, there's like, there's two curb cuts now that there's the pedestrian walkway, and if you park big trucks in front, then it really obscures the ability to get out properly. So like, right in that little section, you might want to just have, you know, car parking only, you know, which is...
I swear, I haven't seen a large truck parked out there for months, and then in the past two weeks, there's been, I'm like, are you kidding me?
Oh, the car carrier, that's, that's different, I mean, I think...
I don't know what that's doing to it.
Well, it's, I actually know, I don't know the person who drives it, but I know his nephew. He plays basketball for me, he's, so it's his uncle, and he stops in when he's on the road and hangs out. And he's been there quite a few times in the last month.
Is that whole area from the American, is it the American Legion?
Yeah.
All the way back to what will now be the medical marijuana place, all that's what you're talking about?
Mm-hmm.
Actually even beyond that, incorporating Eastworks. Because when you go behind Pleasant Street Mills, there's the new parking lot, you're going to actually be able to drive all the way around this building. So one of the reasons we started looking into this was that we wanted something to kind of, well, my idea was to, it was to make sure that that building is like integrated with the neighborhood. Across the street from Pleasant Street, there's a whole bunch of people who live there. And there's even some parking on the other side, so I think if we look at the parking, that will kind of be an organic traffic calming measure, because that's a pretty zippy little street.
Well, one of the things when I saw this...
And there's some crosswalks that need to be kind of...
When I saw this, because I go there almost daily, my gym is in that building, so I go there all the time. And one of the things, when I saw this pop up, that concerns me is the lighting. If there's a car parked on that side, I've almost hit one before, because you can't see them. There's lights on this side of the street illuminating these cars, there's none over here, so if you're just driving down, you can all, it all of a sudden happens upon you, and you have to kind of get over a little bit, so that might be something.
Well, and what we talked about doing before, which is, this is where I dropped the ball, I didn't pursue it, was to just get, you know, this kind of a schematic of the mills and kind of mark out what the existing conditions are now, because everything does have rules with it. I know the exit that's going to be on the west end of where Eastworks is, that road, I had actually looked up the traffic rules for that road, because somebody living there had asked me if it was okay to park on that street during winter parking, was it not winter parking? Because a lot of people were moving over that street, and I was like, unfortunately, it's actually no parking for anybody ever, so don't even pursue that.
Is that the one that goes down and then goes under the tunnel?
Uh, no, no, that's in between the buildings. This is like, if you were in the Riffs parking lot, there's a house, and then it's kind of like, that's actually a road.
It's like a big parking lot, but it's a road.
But there's a road, and then there's the parking lot, so there's technically no parking on that road, but the people who live in that house have been parking on the street there for forever. So there's a lot of things that, you know, I think planning's going to be really helpful, because, you know, you want to look at kind of what people are doing and what's working, you know, and make sure that we don't...
And the impetus, you think will slow down traffic a little bit, and also allow for kind of a more of a neighborhood feel?
I think so, yeah, so that it's not kind of like a, just a, that it doesn't turn into like a brick wall for, you know, I mean, there's a great park across the street, there's a great, you know, and so just to, just kind of increase the neighborhoodishness of it.
And probably better crosswalks if those illuminated ones or something.
That would be amazing. Yeah, because, I mean, Eastworks does have a parking lot across the street, so, you know, but there aren't any crosswalks for that, so...
Take your lucky...
And people, people are quick coming out of that road now.
Yeah, they are.
They boogie right through, what are you doing?
I've literally seen police cars go ninety miles an hour down that street. Ninety, nine, I had to call Bruce and say, "This is outrageous that our police officers will drive down Pleasant Street, where there's this many kids, going ninety miles an hour." I mean, they were going so fast that I've never seen a police car go that fast in a city...
Oh, you mean without lights?
No, no, they had their lights on, but they were going so ridiculously fast, like, I was like, "That better have been a murder." That was in progress that you could have prevented, because you were putting people's lives at stake with that type of driving.
Yeah.
I mean, there's definitely...
Well, and there's going to be more people coming in and out of that whole area. I mean, there's three entrances and exits for Eastworks, there's, you know, the road in between the buildings that goes through into the tunnel, there's, that's almost a horseshoe in front of 180, there's two entrances there, and then there's the American Legion, and, you know...
So we're going to have to, like, all those entrances are going to have to have sighting. That's why I was saying, it would be good for us to go out with a measure and cite that and say, I mean, it's pretty, I think it's pretty well established of what the sighting buffers are for in and outs, like, at East Hampton Savings Bank, I noticed, when you pull out, there's a buffer, you know, it's painted in, like, yellow, where you can't park, and then there's parking space. So they probably have standard, you know, like twelve-foot sighting, but those, we'll have to make sure that each entrance has that type of part, so people can't park right on the edge, which they're doing now in some of the places. So when you try to get out, you're like, you know, really having to nose out.
Yeah.
And I know that across from the package store, it's like a random fifteen-minute parking.
Well, and some consistency in the signage, it's one of the other things we're looking for. You know, painting the spots where a car...
It's going to help, that will definitely help.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I think that one's going to be a field trip.
Yeah.
A couple field trips, because even looking at it now, it's not clear, it's not like there's no, already just people parking all over the streets, there's so many different kinds of parking, it's not clear to me, all right, oh, we can put a car there, we can put a car there, you know, where these extra spots are going to go.
Right, and it's, and there's parking lots, so if you're going, you know, down, you know, from Eastworks down to the other mills, there's a lot, there is parking on the right-hand side, but then like, there's also like one section where it's parking on the left-hand side, too. You know, so there's kind of, we'll have to parse that out.
Yeah, I mean...
And going down with safety officials would be so important to make sure it does become a common effort, because just adding more parking and still having people speed through there, now it's even more dangerous than it already is.
And if we want to do anything with lighting or crosswalks, like, you know, if we wanted to look at getting some of those new technological, like solar-powered flashing light, where you press the button and there's, I think, on State Street in Northampton is a good example.
Yeah, I mean, State Street's been fighting this battle for literally years, they've tried everything.
And, but that would be, that would be planning, we'd have to get into, because they're the ones that are going to have to write the grants, you know, that's not, you know, the budget for that.
Yeah, I mean, this encompasses a lot of things, a friend of mine owns a mill, one of the mills, and that's what we were talking about, where it was like, you know, what is going to happen, because that whole neighborhood is, I mean, it's just going to change. And the idea was if we started this, we would have the whole winter to kind of come forward, and now it's nice now, now it's like, well, this, that was quick, so, I mean, maybe we'll have some extra money, because we didn't have the plans so much. Right.
You know how that is all?
I know. But, yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it's a whole plan, and we're going to have to...
But that is a good point, that while, you know, once, I think once we get established, like a mock, you know, we draw it in, and say this is what we envision it to look like.
Yeah.
Bring in the mill owners and making sure that they're on board and, um, I think that's...
Yeah, they, I've talked to a few of the mill owners, they definitely want to be involved, but I felt like an existing conditions situation might be smart. And, oh, and then Barbara had requested that we make sure that doing landmarks, that we use things that are permanent. I guess in the past, people have used landmarks that are like buildings, that are no longer there, or a tree, or something like that, so, just to keep an eye out for stuff like that.
So you're going to check out that existing conditions map?
Well, we're going to have to get a map, and then all the existing conditions are actually in a text document that are the, where parking is allowed and not allowed.
It's in the, well, it's in the ordinance.
It's in the ordinance, so every single street is listed and what it can be.
It's like three hundred feet easterly of the intersection of...
You can see why that might have gone to the bottom of my to-do list.
But you have a lawyer now to read through all that stuff, so...
Yes, yes.
Or several.
So site, we schedule a site visit and existing conditions.
Yeah, we can do a walk.
So we could make it like a working meeting?
Yeah, the Riffs, walk down, eating their lunch.
Keep it every brewery?
Yeah, that sounds like actually a really...
Well, you got to talk to the...
I meet more people walking around, I live in Eastricks, more people walking around Eastricks going, "Is there, where's the brewery?"
Oh, that's too funny, yeah.
We're in the wrong building, yeah.
Let me take you.
There'll be a bus leaving, every fifteen minutes.
I was thinking, you know, one of the things I was thinking about that, obviously that big truck that parked there, that's probably not going to continue, just because it doesn't make a lot of sense for that truck yet. But maybe we could, I mean, if it's, you know, he's legitimately going to visit his family or whatever, maybe they could work out something with the truck parking lot, which is like a hundred feet up the road, you know, if we make it no parking for, you know, if we make that spot that he takes up, spots for, you know, eight individual cars, can just talk to this person, parks that are over, like, how many years?
My friends are the ones with the parking lot across the street, so, yeah, maybe we, I can, you know, we could pitch that for them. I mean, there's been tractor-trailer trucks there parked overnight, running the whole, you know, it's kind of a bummer in the summer, but the way I look at it is that like, this person's probably been driving for fourteen hours.
It's good he's off the road.
Yeah, they don't need somebody being like, "You're noisy." You know what? You've earned it, go park over there. And, yeah, other than that, I think we're...
Well, now I have the street acceptance protocol that I did not have before.
It's not like you were calling, yes.
I was not doing, no, I'm not on my list.
Did you say you were going to bring a draft of the official statement?
Oh, you're right, thank you, aren't you good? Yeah, I have that. So, I, what I started to do, and I showed you this briefly, was I looked at other public safety mission statements that were out there, and I actually don't know what falls under our umbrella, because there are other things that aren't underneath any other Subcommittee, but they've never come up for public safety before, you know. So, police, fire, neighborhood parks, recreation programs, youth services, senior services, maintenance assessment, community development, code enforcement, graffiti abatement, like, I found a huge list of stuff that not normally happens, you know?
One of the things I did for the ordinance one was, I didn't, like, I listed some of the things that we get on a fairly regular basis, but then I also did like catch-all, like a more catch-all thing, you know, like, the Public Safety Committee is, you know, invested in deliberating and setting policy for all things that affect the health, safety of the residents of East Hampton. Some like, some catch-all thing like that, where you don't have to necessarily say, "Well, we never said we weren't, we were supposed to do graffiti abatement, but now it's on our agenda, so that means we can't do it."
Yeah, yeah, as charge of and jurisdiction over all ordinance resolutions, bills, papers, owner management, every kind pertaining to, and then there's, then there's like these laundry lists that people have. You know, like even looking at it, it's like, I wonder why street acceptance is under... You know, like even looking at it, it's like, I wonder why street acceptance is under public safety. You know, 'cause it's kind of a planning ordinance.
I mean, it could, I mean, it could even be under property, you know?
Really?
And I think probably the reason is because to spread the load.
Yeah.
You know, and I think, so like street acceptance is public safety, uh we usually do a telephone poll, you know, working with.
Exactly.
Um so that that's like another one, um.
But I'm seeing like animal control, building inspector, fire, police, um things to do with public works, uh environmental services, health department.
I think water should fall in under this, or?
Water.
Like, that's gonna be uh a, something that we're gonna have to start paying more attention to as we move forward.
Yeah, water is the thing. Street lighting, trees shade.
Yeah.
So I got this huge list of stuff that had, just had never come across public safety before, and I could only kinda go with like my favorable reference was experience.
Mm-hmm.
But, you know, if we want to.
Well, to Salem's point, we could draft something where we list um the general duties of the committee and then including but not limited to, and list some of the more common ones.
Usually common ones.
Yeah, so do you want me to take like, so what I done is just kinda grabbed information from a bunch of other ones and then it was like, wait a minute, I don't even really know. You know what I mean, like, I've got this list of forestry, right of way, homeland security, you know, I mean, there's all these things that like, you know.
We don't have a whole lot of homeland security.
No, no, we don't.
It's not that, yeah.
We do not.
And we didn't do anything, public safety didn't do anything when the microburst hit, I mean.
No?
You know, so.
Wasn't even called.
No.
Um.
Yeah, keep that in mind.
That's what I'm saying. So, um, why don't I throw all this in? A shared Google Doc and we can just whack it.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
'Cause I I don't think this is something we have to worry about working on together in.
No, we can do it online.
We can do it online, because it's just the mission statement. I think Dan was pretty clear about that.
'Cause we're not deliberating, we're creating.
Right. So that'd be great, so I will do that then. Yeah, to provide coordination and oversight at the intersection of public safety and health systems, as well as a forum for agencies and stakeholders to address issues and initiate improvements. I thought that was great.
Yeah, that's good.
And then it got into homeland security and I'm like, I don't know if that's really, but we wanna do.
Hopefully that will remain constant.
True. True, true, true. Other than that, um, does anybody have any new business or anything like that? Everything else going well?
Yeah.
Meeting times all right?
I don't think so.
Information's good?
Do we wanna set another meeting or do we wanna wait until we get some Fox Run info?
Um, I kinda don't wanna set one until we get letters from planning and DPW for Amanda, because I feel bad that. I I mean, I didn't invite her to the meeting, because we hadn't heard anything back from them, so I didn't want her to waste her time, so.
Do you, what, you said, did you share that with me? Oh, oh, these are different, different things?
So this is what I was.
It was like, there's like eight of these.
There's maybe six. So, yeah, if you look at the document, it has like, I did it in different.
Six.
Sections.
Okay.
So that I was, had, was, had each document section.
Oh, yes, I see.
Was its own.
Okay.
Because some of them fell upon each other, you know, like Joy was very adamant that we have a flow chart.
A checklist?
And a checklist.
Yeah, okay.
But you couldn't really create the checklist until you had actually figured out the procedure policy itself to go in the same order as the other thing and what it would, the components would actually be, so. Yeah. And um, so that's what I was talking about when I was like, okay, so what I'll do is I'll consolidate that now all into one document and kinda format it the way that you gave me that one, 'cause I.
Well, maybe.
I thought that was cool looking.
Maybe um one of our next steps could be to to get in touch with uh Bruce or Bob and see if we can do a walkover to Pleasant Street.
Okay.
And if the weather holds up, maybe it's, we can get it in the next two weeks or something.
Yeah, I'll send out that email. Um luckily, when this first came out, that was here.
Okay, good.
So, so it wouldn't be like a total surprise, and and there was nothing that he was like, oh, we're talking about, about, Brady, he's, I'm not.
I figured.
Sorry, I didn't, no, I hate it when people do that. They're like, we'll talk to So and So, I don't know who that is.
Well, Bruce, you know Bruce, right?
Mm-hmm.
He's retiring.
Oh, is he?
Is he?
Oh, yeah. I think maybe soon.
Are you talking out of turn?
Uh, no, I don't think so. I think he was pretty forthcoming with that last time I saw him.
When's he retiring?
I think probably in the summer.
Oh, really?
Wow.
That was the impression I got. He's got Harleys to ride.
Yeah. That's funny. Have we gotten an update on whether or not we hired and used to be engineer?
Still on the.
But they're, I think they're still.
On the website, yeah.
But they're still probably interviewing.
Although I did see they have a camp downstairs.
Hmm, well, that's good. Camp non-attack.
I don't think, are you serious?
We're gonna make some money, so.
Um. There's this that's cool. This is a little bit of just legislative news, so this is the report of the special senate committee on marijuana. And Stan Rosenbrook's group just put that out. I don't know if you've had a chance to read it yet, but it's.
Oh, on legalizing it?
Yeah, it's a really huge.
They're not so hot for it, are they?
No, I don't think so.
Um.
I don't think Stan was.
Dan is putting forward information. The AG is no, Mayor Marty Walsh is no.
Well, they brought in some really anti.
DA is no.
Consultants.
No.
From Colorado that were fully biased. And we, but there was no, no mistaking of a um a a non-biased approach to that plan.
Yeah, and then the other big thing is the um, the trans bill, um.
For bathrooms?
Yeah, for rights and um equal rights and that's.
I hope we can do better than over the law.
Oh, God.
Dude, we can.
I don't think, I mean, I think if we did nothing, we'd be better than them.
I don't think you can do more than that. I'll take a motion to it, Jerry.
Okay, so I'm sorry.
All in favor?
Yeah.
All right.
But, you know what they didn't mention in that?